First, a workers' compensation liability claims report. Conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation, City of Galt versus Seven Star. And we also had a third item under our special meeting agenda, conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, and there's no action to report under either or any of those three items.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we will close the special meeting with city council and continue with the open meeting. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Payne, present. Councilmember Hewer, here. Councilmember Campion, here. Councilmember Powers, here. Mayor Cruz, here.
Public comment, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay. I got a little bit of hit on myself on what it looks like. But let's go, we'll start with the, can we stand for a sound appear, please? Wrong page. [laughter] Please turn in the facts of the, my place.
[inaudible] [inaudible]
Thank you. Since we've covered public comment, how about our video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is also webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv. Tonight's meeting will air this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. This meeting is also closed to captions. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay. Do I have any agenda approval additions or deletions? Okay, with that, on your presentations, the Galt Youth Commission.
Thank you for allowing us this time to speak on behalf of the Galt Youth Commission. My name is Brandon Garcia, and I'm a Galt High Senior.
My name is Andrew Klotz, and I'm a junior from Lively Ranch High School.
My name's Pete Lombardi, and I'm with California Waste Recovery Systems here.
So, this summer, the Galt Youth Commission gathered for a summer retreat. At this retreat, we planned upcoming year's projects that we would work on. Our focus was on projects that we could, that could benefit the youth and the community as a whole. The retreat venue was provided by Cal Waste, and during our tour of the facility, it came to our attention that the number one safety hazard on materials recovery facility was improperly disposed needles. We came to understand the health hazard of improperly disposed needles, not only to the MRF workers, but also to the public as a whole. During this past summer, I was, I was an intern at Cal Waste. While there, I gained a better understanding on how coming across these hypodermic needles can be a traumatic thing. I actually saw what happens when one of these needles is found in the system. So when this happens, all production is stopped immediately, and it has to be stopped for 10 minutes while the workers search through all the materials in hopes to find other needles that might be in there. Now, this is necessary because any one of these needles can possibly be holding a disease such as hepatitis and HIV. If you're posed by one of these needles, you could potentially have to go through years of testing to figure out if you've actually contracted the disease or not. Now imagine how concerning this must be to the workers. They are rummaging through all the various materials, not knowing where one of these needles might possibly be, but fully aware of the potential risk and danger that they present to them. This uncertainty as to what can be contracted through contact with one of these needles creates anxiety amongst the workers. However, it's not just the workers who are at risk of exposure. Needles disposed of in the street or in the park can also put children in harm's way. Improperly disposed of needles can be found almost anywhere in the community, ranging from parking lots and restaurant restrooms, putting both employees and citizens at risk of exposure. But it doesn't have to be this way. Given the concerns, we decided that we were going to look further into the issue and do some more research. This is what we found. During our research, we discovered that there was a law passed by state legislature prohibiting the disposal of sharps in public nonspecific waste, recycling, and green recycling. We also learned that 31% of all sharp-related injuries are by improperly disposed of needles. Currently, we have no place to return these used sharps in Galt. However, businesses in Sacramento and Tulare that dispense sharps are required to take them back at no cost due to city ordinance. Local businesses that dispense sharps indicated that they would be happy to take back customers' sharps if they got consent of their corporate office. We decided to contact these corporate offices on multiple occasions, but we received no, but no response. We would now like to share a local example of how this affects our community.
Hello. My name's Pete Lombardi, and I'm the Materials Recovery Facility Manager that he interned at here locally in Galt. Our state-of-the-art facility utilizes machinery to separate the recycled stream that you put in your green waste cart at your home here in Galt. We pick that up in a garbage truck, bring it into our facility, and tip it on a tip floor, and then push it across a machine with our individuals, a staff of 30 people working to, what he referred to as, sort through that material. So the machine does the bulk of the processing to separate material, and then the people do what's called quality control on how the machine separates that material. Quality control personnel are issued mandatory personal protective equipment. That PPE is referred to as a hard hat, safety vest, eye protection, hair protection, and of course, needle-stick resistant gloves. The main role of each of these quality control personnel is to identify and target specific material types, either to remove for further recycling or to remove contaminants from the recycling stream to be disposed of as residual. Whenever we do encounter needles, the crew does, as you mentioned, or they are required to stop the entire operation. Once the conveyor is stopped, the quality control person utilizes metal tongs, like what you have in your drawer at home, to pick up that needle and put, place it in an authorized Our MRF has an average of eight stops a day. Of those eight, two-thirds of them are related to needles. So when you do the math, each stop takes about three minutes when you really hit stop to start. So if it's three minutes, two-thirds of eight being five, then you have 15 minutes a day of a person, a citizen of Galt, being in contact with this potentially dangerous item. That is 65 hours a year of our staff being in contact with a hypodermic needle that has unfortunately been improperly disposed of in the recycling stream. This is just recycling we're talking about. Unfortunately, we don't identify all these needles before someone has been stuck by one. The needle-stick resistant gloves that I mentioned earlier are not actually needle-stick proof, they're only needle-stick resistant. In spite of constant training in the above-mentioned screening and emergency stop procedures, we have five needle sticks in 2014 here in Galt. Each time there's a needle stick, it costs the company thousands of dollars in workers' compensation and production loss. To properly dispose of sharps, the needle must be properly containerized and then transported to an appropriate facility for destruction. The disposal cost alone at our facility is over $5,000 a year. But that's just the numbers. The biggest challenge to me as a person leading this organization is explaining what happens to someone who has just experienced a needle stick. The employee starts with a doctor's visit, right off of that, they have to go to the doctor that day. At that doctor's visit, they get blood drawn and they get any vaccinations that are available that they don't already have. Three months later, they go back to get blood drawn again. At the six months from the incident mark, they get blood drawn a third time. And then one full year after the incident, they have blood drawn again, and then they wait for the results. Since the gestation period for bloodborne pathogen diseases can be over 12 months, in that time, the person has to wait that full year from the day of the incident to discover whether they have or have not contracted a bloodborne pathogen-type disease from that needle stick when all they did was just show up to work that day. Until then, they just wait. Thank you.
Given this information, we respectfully ask that the Galt City Council adopts an ordinance that mirrors ordinances in Sacramento, Tulare County, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Cruz that requires businesses that dispense needles to also take them back at no cost to consumers. The reason we're, the reason we're proposing this is that there is currently no local and safe means for citizens to get rid of their needles and sharps. Also, by imposing this ordinance, we'd be able to reduce the amount of injuries related to them and also the costs related to those injuries. Going to the picture on screen, I'll get to that in a moment. We're asking you to do this to ensure the safety of the citizens of Galt by reducing the risk of exposure to improperly and illegally disposed of needles. Going to the picture of the two-liter bottle with sharps in it, this shows that the citizens of Galt truly want to do the right thing. However, we currently do not provide a means, system, or structure for them to do so. By passing this law and with the proper education and proper behavior modification, we ensure that these needles be put in the right container and right answer safe disposal. By doing this, we ensure a safer community. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Is there, in these other communities in Sacramento and Tulare, is there, are there organizations, or I think you and I talked, and CDH Pharmacy or one of the pharmacies takes them back?
Yes, actually, me and my mentor, John Jordan, went to Sacramento, and we visited Rite Aid and Rayleigh's. And in those counties, they did take back needles at their pharmacies.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No, just a comment. I think it was a great project, and I think you brought something alike that most people don't even think about.
Thank you very much.
Very important, too.
Thank you.
Yes, you did a great job.
Yes.
Good job.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Mayor, we have the rest, or not the rest, a quite few other of the youth commission here. Could we ask them to stand up as well as the adult mentors so we can take a look at some of these young people that are involved?
Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I would suggest with council's approval to have the attorney look into this and bring back an ordinance mirroring that at least for council consideration.
That'd be a great idea.
If I could make one recommendation, I think before we jump right to the ordinance...
Sacramento Go is the Sacramento...
State contact with the providers.
Well, I think the other part is that there are some other options for addressing this problem, and I think before we jump right to the ordinance, with the council's permission, I'd like to bring back a report that kind of presents a lot of different options, and then after that meeting, we can get further direction whether you want to proceed with an ordinance or not.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. All right, next. Sacramento Transportation Authority, Sacramento Go.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. I appreciate a few moments. My name's Brian Williams. I'm the Executive Director of Sacramento Transportation Authority. The STA, as we call ourselves, is the agency that administers the Measure A voter-approved countywide half-cent transportation sales tax program throughout Sacramento County. We're a small group, we have four professional staff, actually 3.8 if you're specific, and we receive policy direction from a 16-member governing board. The 16 board positions, one is reserved for the City of Galt, and that position is ably served by Councilmember Campion, and that position is actually shared with the City of Ileton. I want to talk to you tonight a little bit about the Measure A sales tax program and the future of transportation funding in the Sacramento area. Measure A currently generates over $100 million per year for expenditure on local street improvements and maintenance, on highway carpool lanes, and interchange improvements, and on public transit expansion, and operations activities. Approximately 80% of those funds are earmarked for maintenance and operation of our existing local transportation infrastructure. The remaining 20% is for new capital projects. The STA has developed working partnerships with each of the local public works departments in our county with regional transit and with Paratransit Incorporated to facilitate the expenditure of transportation and sales tax revenues consistent with a formula that is set forth in the Measure A ordinance. We also provide a small allocation annually to support the activities of the Metropolitan Air Quality and Management District. Our partnership with the City of Galt over the last few years has been very effective. During the past five years specifically, STA has distributed about $5 million to the city's transportation department for ongoing street maintenance and operations activities. In roughly that same period, we provided almost $11 million in a contribution to construct the Central Galt Interchange. Of interest to some Galt residents, we provided about $10 million in the last few years for project delivery of the Capital Southeast Connector project, which will provide a peripheral expressway around downtown Sacramento from Elk Grove to Rancho Cordova to Folsom. And I think we also have a few Measure A dollars in the Twin Cities Roundabout. My point with those examples is that the Measure A program has been successful and effective at delivering on the promises that voters made when they approved our current Measure A term in 2004. The problem is, as we, as we proceed with delivering the Measure A program, we celebrate new projects as they're opened for public use, we look to the future with some level of concern. The Measure A program is designed to leverage other local, state, and federal transportation funds. Our objective is to be a one-third partner, to provide one-third of the funds needed to build a new, a new transportation project. Our state partnership was based on Proposition 1B, which has been the state transportation program that we relied on for the last 10 years. Those monies have been exhausted, and of course, Part 1B was a bond program, borrowed money that was not a new source of revenue, so we're now paying those monies back. And once again, on the federal side, the federal transportation program has expired. It will expire again in May. The Highway Trust Fund again flirts with insolvency. The challenge there is both state and federal transportation funding sources are based on a fuel tax, which effectively is less than, in real terms, is less than it was 25 years ago. But during that time, of course, we faced some tremendous construction cost inflation. And while we expect that our state and federal leaders will eventually address some of these concerns and these shortcomings, it's quite likely that the state and federal governments will begin to play a diminished role in transportation funding in the future. And this is consistent with the trend over the last 20 years to devolve transportation decision-making and policymaking to local and regional decision-makers such as yourselves. As local policymakers, as city council persons, you have assumed a greater responsibility in setting transportation plans and policies, and you will now become more responsible for generating the funds to implement those decisions, whether that work occurs here at this venue or on the participation at the STA or at Secod. So with that new responsibility, what are some of the challenges? The STA recently surveyed transportation managers throughout the county, including Mr. Winkler, regarding the unfunded transportation priorities during the next 20 to 30 years, excuse me, next 10 to 20 years. There are many pending challenges. I want to mention just two of them, and first and foremost is a problem that we have with street and road maintenance. Countywide, the backlog of maintenance, of pavement maintenance on major streets and roads is approximating $600 million. This affects every city, and it affects the unincorporated county. And of course, this figure increases every year as we set back some of our maintenance projects because we don't have proper amount of resources. For context, Measure A generates about $30 million per year for street maintenance countywide. So we're providing a $30 million contribution to what is a $600 million program. A second challenge we have, and then many more, I'm just giving you a couple of examples, and has to do with public transit. The regional transit, which is the main transport provider in Sacramento County, I know they don't come down here, but they're the largest transport provider in Sacramento County, they have indicated they have sufficient funds to operate their existing bus and light rail system, even though some of their maintenance needs are being deferred. However, RT can't expand without additional local revenues for capital construction and operation. They can't compete for the federal and state agencies that they would need to build a large capital project such as a light rail extension. One of the extensions on their plan is to bring light rail south from, as some of us recall, where they're building now, toward the Citadel Grove. So what do we do? Well, the STA governing board, in anticipation of assuming some enhanced level of transportation funding responsibility in the future, has directed staff to begin what effectively is a community conversation and a research project. There are four key objectives. First, we want to inform county residents of the substantial accomplishments of the existing Measure A sales tax program. I have a very small administrative budget, I don't spend very much money on telling voters and citizens what we do. We need to find a way to do a better job of that. You know, it's fundamental that taxpayers understand where their sales tax dollars are going. The second objective is to explain to Sacramento County residents what is the extent of unfunded transportation needs, because as I mentioned in those two examples, they are considerable. A third objective of this outreach program is to seek input from the public and from community organizations on their various transportation priorities. What would they like to see happen in the future in Sacramento County, and what are problems they're dealing with right now? And lastly, we want to determine the willingness of county voters to possibly support a supplemental local transportation funding program, most likely in the form of a supplemental countywide transportation sales tax. The objective of this outreach program, we call it Sacramento Go. And the Sacramento Go effort involves a speakers bureau, where we draw up the community organizations and the business groups and provide presentations such as I'm doing right now with the video which I'll show in a minute. We have a new interactive website, we call it Sacramento dot, SacramentoGo.org. We provide up-to-date information on Measure A capital projects. It also is interactive, so people who go to the website can leave comments and observations and the information they want to share about their transportation experience. We have a new social media program. We have also begun a new project signage program. Traditionally, when we started to build broke ground on a new Measure A capital project, we would direct a sign, say, "Your Measure A sales tax dollars at work." And then when the project opened for public use, we'd take it down. Engineers don't like signs, they get their stuff. But we found that when you take the sign down, people forget. And so our new protocol is to put the sign up at the time the project opens, and then to leave it up. And we've also had, some of our jurisdictions have gone back to projects that they have delivered in the last few years and put the signs back up. And we redesigned the sign to make it a little more catchy, you know, it kind of grabs the driver and gets his attention. And lastly, this program involves voter opinion research. We're asking voters through telephone polling and focus groups, what do they think about the possibility of paying additional monies of their own for transportation improvements, and what do they, what do they think are the real problems we need to address? So with that, the overall objective of Sacramento Go is to raise the public profile of the Measure A program and to prepare a transportation maintenance and capital improvement program in anticipation of a potential future supplemental sales tax initiative in 2016 or later. I'm going to tee up in a second, not yet. I'm going to tee up a second, a short video that summarizes the Sacramento Go program. I want to mention, I did put a brochure in front of all of you that describes the program. I put a stack of them in the back corner as well. I want to remind you all that this is an STA-sponsored community outreach effort. The STA board has taken no position on a future sales tax initiative, and no individual STA board member has declared support for a new transportation sales tax. So with that, I will have you start the video, and I'll be around to answer questions afterwards. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us today. Sacramento Go is the Sacramento Transportation Authority's project to evaluate, propose,
and find a source of funding for future transportation improvements throughout the region. The authority is a partnership agency of regional transit, Paratransit, Sacramento County, and the cities of Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, Folsom, Galt, Ileton, Rancho Cordova, and Sacramento. The authority administers the half-cent local sales tax that has provided funding for nearly every major Sacramento-area transportation improvement project for more than 25 years. Known as Measure A, it was first approved by voters in 1988 and renewed with 75% support in 2004. The promises made by Measure A have been kept by the cities, the county, and the transit agencies charged with carrying out the measure's transportation projects. Sacramento has had a 165-year tradition as a North American crossroad, from the days of the Transcontinental Railroad to the convergence of two of America's most important interstate highways, to an efficient system of major boulevards and neighborhood streets. Our transportation system has stimulated the local economy and helped improve the character of our communities. The most important streets are the ones you drive on to work, to school, or to the grocery store, and Measure A has helped keep a focus on our neighborhood roadways, one of the highest priorities of our local transportation planners. The most critical congestion relief projects delivered by Measure A are visible throughout the region, from Folsom to Elk Grove, from Citrus Heights to Galt, and these are just some of the dozens of projects that have reduced stress on our transportation system. Measure A also has made our streets safer, not only for motorists, but for bicyclists, pedestrians, and our kids. Transit services are essential to many local residents and critical to the environment. Measure A has made it possible for regional transit to maintain and improve bus service, to extend light rail to Folsom and Casumus River College, and to make progress on eventual extension to Natomas Town Center and Sacramento International Airport. Measure A is a key funding source for one of the fastest-growing transportation alternatives in the region, paratransit services for older residents and those with disabilities. The long-awaited launch of Sacramento's downtown intermodal terminal was only possible with the help of Measure A funding. Still, the world has changed since voters approved Measure A in 1988 and renewed it a decade ago. It's time to look to the future and possible new ways to pay for needed improvements. That's what Sacramento Go is all about. While Measure A has been very effective in constructing key highway and transit improvements to this point, we still face serious challenges. The bulk of local streets, roads, and bridges in the county were built in the '60s, '70s, and '80s, and are wearing out all at the same time. Unless we deal with aging infrastructure now, the cost will be much greater in the future. Professional engineering studies clearly show that without additional revenue, the county and some older cities will never catch up. Neither the state nor federal governments are considering serious proposals to help. Meanwhile, the purchasing power from existing gas tax revenues has gone down 60% since the last state increase in 1990 and federal increase in 1993. As we all know, baby boomers are just now reaching retirement age and will live longer than previous generations. In the next few years, many more will stop driving, but will still need access to doctors, stores, entertainment, and religious activities. The need for a variety of transit services for this increasing population will become huge in the next few years. Sacramento Go is a project to explore options to meet these and other challenges. STA is working closely with its partner agencies to develop a draft plan to address how a new half-cent sales tax could help. The vast majority of funding would be focused on a fix-it-first program, filling potholes and repairing decaying roads and bridges. Local... Local agencies would have flexibility and control over a broad range of new approaches, including what's called complete streets programs that rebuild old, worn-out roads to provide new curbs, gutters, sidewalks, bicycle paths, wider and better roadbeds, high-tech traffic controls, and improved safety features. Regional Transit would receive additional funding for such things as express bus and rail services, as well as replacement and rehabilitation of old light rail cars and stations. Paratransit Incorporated would receive added funding for special senior and disabled transit services to address our growing senior population. Three regional priorities are in the mix also. One is a light rail extension from the Sacramento Valley Station Intermodal Terminal through the Natomas Town Center to Sacramento Airport. Another is completion of that downtown intermodal terminal, a critical center connecting all of light rail lines, intercity and local bus lines, and Amtrak intercity passenger service to the Bay Area and other West Coast cities. The third is the Capital Southeast Connector Road linking Highway 99 and Interstate 5 near Elk Grove through Rancho Cordova to Highway 50 in Folsom. All of these regionally important facilities currently receive only partial funding for Measure A. A new measure would complete funding for these key projects and deliver them into service to the public many years earlier than is currently possible. It's important for us to hear from you, so please go to our website and let us know what you think. And thank you for investing your time in better understanding the challenges we face in the Sacramento region.
Thank you. That concludes my prepared remarks. I'll be happy to answer any questions or receive any observations.
Do you ever foresee coming, you said you're going to be stopping at Elk Grove. Do you ever foresee coming as far as Galt?
With light rail?
Yes.
I have to defer to regional transit because I don't know that regional transit goes providing service outside the district boundaries.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian, for coming down. That was a nice presentation. Appreciate it and...
Nice brochure. Very nice.
Did find a little typo on it for you.
Oh. I gave you that several months ago.
I didn't see it. You got the interchange, Delta Central interchange, the Centralville interchange at Twin Cities Road.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah. Well, thank you all.
Maybe that's for a future one.
The future. Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, the Sacramento Division of the American Society of Civil Engineers. The Community Development Project of the Year 2014.
Well, that'll come back to me. And on, get my dates right here, on February 25th, the City of Galt, along with our design consultant, received an award presentation for the Twin Cities project, and we just received a new and improved plaque that "Galt" spelled correctly. It is now a four-letter word. It was five. So with that bit of humor aside, we would like to just present this to Mayor Cruz, and I'd like to ask Gwen Owens to step down and receive this. And I guess I kind of inherited the presentation since we weren't able to get our council members up to that presentation. But, no, so Mayor Cruz, I'm going to present this to you, and then I don't know if our resident photographer would like to get a picture of the two of you, and while he's doing that, I'm just going to give a couple of fun facts about the award. It is presented, was achieved by the Sacramento Chapter of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and it was the 2014 Award for the Community Improvement Project of the Year. And it was judged on six or seven different factors, including contribution to the well-being of the people and community, resourcefulness in planning and solving design challenges, agency cooperation and coordination, we had, as you recall, three different jurisdictional agencies involved in the roundabouts project, and pioneering use of materials and methods with the roundabout, innovations in construction, impact on the physical environment, and beneficial effects of the project, including the study value. So we're very pleased that the American Society of Civil Engineers would look to Galt for an example of a gateway, a project into a community, and we're very proud of them. So very pleased to present that to council tonight and for the community as well.
You say that, but I've got several cities that are part of Steakhouse, and they're just jumping like crazy trying to come down and take a look at this thing. In fact, right now, the Director of Transportation is trying to put together a field trip, so we're ahead of them on that.
All right. Well, tell them to exit the Twin Cities and just go around.
Hey, I just want to say it kind of took some courage for the City of Galt to do roundabouts, because if we had polled all the citizens in the community, they would have said, "You guys are nuts for doing it." But I think currently I haven't heard any negative things. There's maybe some out there, but I think mostly it's been a success, and thank you all for your hard work and your vision.
I think that we did hear a lot of people say, "You guys are nuts." And I have a neighbor across the street who runs the trucking company, and he was like, "Mary Lou, I don't believe you're going to do that." And right after it was done, he came over and he said, "I love this job." So I, you know, we changed a lot of minds along the way, and I think the beauty of them, the sculptures are awesome, and I think they're a great statement coming into the city. Very well done.
Awesome job. Okay, since we've already had the disclaimer on public comment, Al Baldwin on the extravaganza.
Good evening, council, and our city manager, and our police chief. I just want to remind you that this will be the last time you'll hear, it can be on camera this way, that extravaganza, and if you want to know how to spell it, you can go to the city's website. They have a great, great picture of what's going to go on and what's happening. But come to Galt on the 28th of March, 9:00 to 2:00, take Central Galt Turnoff, you'll come down C Street, and you can't miss it. Just keep on driving. Then you'll see some cars, some nice hot rods, you'll hear music, you'll see a parade, plenty of parking, lots of fun, lots of food. You'll see just about everything in the central part of Galt, which used to be the original central part of Galt. And look through the flagpole, and then look what's in the bottom of the flagpole if you ever do come down to Galt, which you should, because the home prices are better than that other town up north. I think it's called Elk Grove. And you're going to find a lot of good things in Galt, a lot of character, a lot of kids, a lot of fun, a lot of schools. And the thing is, so positive in Galt, you're going to have a hard time leaving it. So come on down to Galt. It's on a Saturday, the 28th of March. And if you want any more information, just go to the city website or just type in extravaganza if you can spell it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Al.
I want to add something. I know Barbara's worked on it really hard and shop local for a lot of years, and every year it gets better and better and bigger and bigger, and there's more people that come down every year. And I think it's a really great time for the city council to go down and be able to talk to some of your constituents, and there's a lot of people there, and it's really a good time to be out in the open and have a good time.
Great, thank you. And I'll be looking for some judges for some of the contests too, so I'll be talking to you.
All right. Consent calendar. Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Seven.
Call for vote, please.
We didn't have you read them for a while. Do you want her to read them? Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Five more votes, unanimous. Under scheduled matters, under the city council's office, strategic plan update. They're looking here. Ready, Steve? Under our three-year goal, enhance and maintain infrastructure and facilities. This is our update. Councilmember Barbara Payne and Mayor Mark Cruz, working with the management team and the Sacramento Public Library Authority, will develop conceptual recommendations and present to the city, the city council, for direction, physical expansion of the library As of March 9th, we met with the library authority, and Don Natoli, the staff, worked with us on needs assessment prior to the next meeting, which we're having in late April, I believe. Program room was preliminary identified as a top priority, so hopefully we get some expansion space. Next, under enhanced economic development. City manager will report on the results of the Delta College locating south of Galt and north of Liberty Road. Would you like to take that one?
Sure. Always like to provide the capital community with an update on what's happening with our Delta College campus, and we're hoping we'll locate on Liberty Road. The Delta College has released an RFP where they're soliciting proposals from alternative sites, potentially alternative sites, and that proposal is due April 9th. Councilmember Hewer and I attended the pre-proposal meeting back in late February, got a presentation from the Delta College consultant, a number of individuals were there, and the good news we heard was that they really liked the Liberty site. They're not looking at alternative sites because they think there's any flaws there, but they're doing their due diligence, and it's a requirement of the chancellor's office that they go through a process to identify all viable alternatives to that. And so they've had, I think, the second pre-proposal meeting now, and so April 9th is when the proposals do. So we've got a group through our CAF committee that's been meeting on a couple different occasions, talking about putting together some type of effort to make sure that Galt's interests are represented and that we make a strong showing in front of the Delta College Board of Trustees when it comes time to make the decision that the community of Galt is very much behind this project, and would love to see this property develop as a Delta College campus, and I think we all recognize the value and benefit it would mean to this community from a variety of different standpoints. So, Councilmember Hewer, do you have anything you would like to add to that?
Just that some members of the community have approached me about forming a community organization to support the project, to show the, to kind of harness in our community's power behind encouraging the trustees to locate their campus here. How many other sites are there? How many sites are on the rate? We don't know.
We don't know until the proposals are received April 9th. So we'll find out in not very, you know, three weeks, something like that.
And actually, Councilmember Campion said he'd serve on the committee too.
I think that will make, I think that's a great idea. I think having a grassroots effort with local community, you know, support is going to make a big difference, hopefully. So I think that's a great idea.
Awesome.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, under improved financial stability, the Chief of Police and City Attorney will obtain a long-term use agreement with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for the improvements to the regional law enforcement training facility.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've had several meetings with CDCR, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. We now have in hand a, what we believe to be, close to be in the final draft, it's in the hands of the city manager currently. We put out to you on a second bid regarding the range improvements. Those bids are due back, I believe, on April 3rd or 4th, and at that time, we'll see if that fits within the financial purview of the contract and also with city funding. So it looks like we're moving ahead. Their long-range goal and their contract is for three years with two one-year extensions on that three-year automatic.
Very good. HR Administrator, under attract, develop, and attain quality employees. To evaluate and make more user-friendly, the City of Galt Job Application webpage, job advertising process, and add information on Galt's social media sites. Call off.
Good evening. Yes, this part of the plan has been completed. I've gone through and as much as I could, made it user-friendly, provided more information as far as job interest cards. I've asked Councilmember Hewer, who was with me during strategic planning, to take a look at it, kind of a fresh set of eyes, and feel that we've met that goal. But with that being said, that we can change the website at any time. So if there are any comments, or if I hear anything, you know, suggestions, I'm really happy to make changes to it just so that it's easier and, you know, candidates find it user-friendly.
Awesome.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and last, under enhanced cultural and youth activities, something near and dear to Councilmember Payne's heart here. Under the Public Works Director, complete the Harvey Park improvements funded by the Housing Grant Fund. How are we doing?
Mayor, council, pleased to announce that we've, of the 13 priority projects slated, we've actually completed two of them, one being the new fencing and backstop at the ballpark there at Harvey Park. And as of today, we've completed the perimeter fencing for the new community, interim community garden, so that our sponsor can safely deposit materials without them walking off the site without us climbing the fence.
And so I'll put half on you.
We'll move on to the other 11.
All right. Mayor, if I could just provide a comment to the audience, anybody that's watching, all of these goals are online, and I know we just highlighted a few of them, but if people want to go on and see how we're making progress on each of them, they can go on the city's website and find that information.
Absolutely. All right, under City Attorney's Office, city firing range entrance coverage. Mr. Rudolph.
Good evening, mayor and council members. At the last city council meeting, the Boy Scouts of America, the Golden Empire Council spoke to the city council during public comment and requested use of the city firing range for several future events. The Boy Scouts and other non-law enforcement groups have used the range over the past several years. As I reported at the last city council meeting, the city does not have liability insurance for the use of the firing range by non-law enforcement groups. In the staff report for this evening, I put in there the four conditions that need to be satisfied for a non-city organization to be covered for the use of that range. And the one that is the most problematic is that it has to be used by a law enforcement division of another public agency. So for example, the Department of Corrections utilizes our range on a regular basis, and if a trainee of the Department of Corrections were to get injured and to sue the city for dangerous condition of public property, first of all, we would have protection because the Department of Corrections indemnifies the city. So we have the backing of the state of California. Additionally, and I was a little bit all over the board on this last time, because our limits of coverage are dependent upon the type of claim, but the amount of coverage that we would have for that type of claim is $40 million. So that is the type of protection that we have in place when we have law enforcement organizations that are utilizing that facility. After the last meeting, we reached out to our insurance pool and asked them a couple of questions. First, we asked them, could the city purchase a rider to our existing coverage that covered the private use of the range? We also asked them, could private entities purchase coverage for the use of the range? And our insurance pool referred these questions to an agent that they retain on a regular basis, called Alliant Insurance Services. They are insurance experts located in the Bay Area. They've been providing support to our insurance pool for as long as I can remember. And there was some pretty interesting feedback that they provided. First of all, the vice chairman of Alliant Insurance Services said that if it was up to him, he would not let this type of non-public sector use occur at the Galt range, but that if we were so inclined to do so, that we should request $10 million of liability coverage. We then went back to them and asked them if they could locate an insurance company that would be willing to underwrite this type of insurance policy. And they came back to us and they said they could not locate somebody that would provide $10 million of coverage. They said it was nonexistent. They did find one program through the NRA. They did find one program through the NRA that offered one million dollars of liability coverage, and their response to that was that one million is not enough. To give you a frame of reference, when we retain folks to do studies for the city, such as prepare environmental impact reports, a pretty low-risk activity, the amount of coverage that we require from that type of consultant is two million dollars basic liability coverage. The reason we require that is because Alliant Insurance Coverage, or Alliant Insurance Services provides a manual to not only our insurance pool, but it's available to cities statewide, and they make recommendations based upon their experience as to the level of insurance protection that cities should request, and we rely heavily upon them, and our insurance pool strongly recommends to us that we adhere to these standards. So, to give you an idea as to where one million dollars of insurance protection falls, there's basically no, there's no business that we would do where we normally would not require two million or above for even the lowest risk of activity. So I'm not surprised when they came back to us and said that one million dollars of coverage would not be sufficient. So those are the facts that I wanted to provide to you tonight. I wanted to make you aware of the fact that we did look for other options to provide insurance coverage, insurance protection to the city, if the council so desired, to allow private use of the range. This is your facility, you can dictate any rules for the use of that facility that you so desire. My recommendation is that you limit the use of this facility to City of Galt sworn police officers and other public agencies that satisfy the four conditions that I outlined in the staff report, so that when that facility is being used, we know that first of all, we will have indemnification, and secondly, we will have forty million dollars of liability protection. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
My question is to the city manager, it seems like in the past when we've had just events in Galt that we only required one million dollars of insurance. Am I remembering that correctly, or?
I don't recall the exact number. I think, the number has changed over the years. It used to be standard was a million dollars, and I think that number was upgraded.
To two?
To two at some point, I don't remember when it was, it was probably five or six years ago that that was updated, so maybe you're thinking of some of the events that we had previously.
I mean, we do deviate on that amount, and, you know, sometimes we have companies that cannot provide two million, sometimes we make an assessment that the risk of the activity is extremely low, and we frankly don't want to pay more money for the service in order to compel the vendor to get two million dollars of coverage. So there certainly is flexibility, and there's also certain times where we have, for example, activities in our parks. You know, if liability was the only issue, we wouldn't even have our parks, right? Because every time we let people use parks, there's liability. But those are facilities that are designed and intended for general public use, and this facility is a little bit different. I mean, the primary purpose of that is for law enforcement training activities, and it doesn't mean that you can't make a decision to use it differently, but that is, that is the intended use, and that's why our insurance coverage is limited for that type of activity, at least at that facility.
Are there any statistics or history that support that kind of ruling that you're suggesting?
I'm not aware of any, of any statistics. I don't know why the, you know, the insurance pool decided to write the policy, the memorandum of coverage as they did. I can only just report to you that that's the, that's what's in our policy, and if we allow non-law enforcement use of that facility, then we do not have liability coverage for that use.
Do you happen to know about, in the private sector where they have shooting ranges, what kind of insurance is provided for those private businesses?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
It just seems curious to me that, you know, if you're a business, a gun range, that they can get insurance. The other question I have, our cadets or our explorers, they're a part of the Boy Scout program, and they have used the range. How, I mean, I don't understand why, and those were, those are students that use it, that happen to be in the scouts, why can't we extend it to the Boy Scouts?
Well, you can make that decision. I'm just telling you that if you do make that decision, you will not have coverage through our insurance pool.
So the explorers do use the range, is that correct?
He's thinking, he said no.
That was a yes, chief?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that was historically it's been used, it has not been used recently under this management team.
I remember, it's been about a year, I think, since we came up with this new agreement and new policies regarding the use, and I don't, it doesn't sound like it's been used by explorers since that period of time.
Well, with the, if the requirements of insurance, I mean, did JPA change the requirements for the insurance exceptions within the last year? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think there's been a change within the last year, you know. Frankly, that there was, at least from my perspective, I was not aware of the type of activity that was occurring at the range. I was contacted by the police department a little over a year ago and said that they were reviewing their protocol for the use of the range, the agreement. At that point in time, I took a look at the agreements that they were utilizing, I took a look at the insurance policy, and at that point in time, last March, I reported to them that there was this limitation in our liability policy. I don't know, Paula, do you know how long it's been in there? I don't think it's new.
I just don't think we were aware of it.
Yeah, it sounds like we just had an exposure, we were unaware.
Exactly. That's it.
Any further questions? I have several. We'll take the Boy Scouts aside for a second. We've had a program operating for what, about two years?
A program?
Yes, over ten years, where Department of Fish and game, Hunter Safety Program, and it was sponsored by the City of Galt through Parks and Recreation. And based on what I'm reading on this, on this report, that goes bye-bye, which means the backlog of citizens that we've had, and we've had a pretty good-sized backlog of citizens who want to be part of this, but it has so much popularity, it fills up, showing that we have people out there who want to be responsible gun owners and gun users, and we're basically saying, meh, we don't want to accept the liability. This group is willing to accept the liability. I think, and this is my personal opinion, I'm hoping the council will support this, that we need to go back and look at a policy, a city policy, that allows that to be used for that purpose when it's available, where the individuals who use it take all the responsibility and indemnify the City of Galt. It just makes sense to me.
Well, I think there's two things. I'll let Steve talk to the indemnification because it's not as simple as that, but as far as the program itself, the program doesn't necessarily go away. There's a hunter safety course that will, can continue to be offered. The actual going to the range is an optional component of that class. The class can be done in a classroom setting, it can go through all the entire program, so that program can continue, people that want to go through the hunter safety course can continue to do that, they just wouldn't be able to go through the optional range portion of it.
And like most people, I'm a hands-on kind of person, so you can tell me everything you want to tell me, but until I get hands-on to do it, it doesn't sink in. And this group has done it for, like I'm being told, ten years without any incidents. So I don't see a problem here, I think we're creating our own problem.
Well, I don't think they're, we have created, it's what the JPA has established.
I understand that.
It's more a matter of maybe we make a request of the JPA to look at, you know, reconsideration. I don't know if that's a possibility or whether they would.
It sounds like they're set in stone, they're not going to move on it. Am I correct on this?
We haven't talked to the JPA, have we?
We haven't, no, we have not made that request.
Sorry.
And it does seem like insurance companies sort of base their fees and everything on statistics, and we've had this group for ten years, and I think the Boy Scouts have been using it for.
Longer.
Thirty, thirty years. So do we only look at statistics one time and not the other side as well?
Well, if I could respond to a couple of points. First of all, as it relates to indemnification, indemnification is only as valuable as the entity that is providing it to you. So when I have, or when we have an agreement with the state of California and they agree to indemnify the city, I'm very comfortable with that level of indemnification. When a private citizen or a nonprofit organization provides an indemnification to the city, frankly, it has very little if no value to us. When you look at the amount of liability coverage that we require in that amount, so for example, one million dollars, that includes your cost of defense. So if you pick up a case, for example, a dangerous condition of public property, and you spend three or four hundred thousand dollars to defend that case, which is not unreasonable, and you end up in court and you lose that case, the amount of coverage that you have to pay that claim is only now six hundred thousand dollars left. And if you exceed the amount of insurance coverage that you have, then the liability in this scenario would be a liability and responsibility of the city general fund. And so I think that the question that the city council has to consider is if you are going to allow private use of this facility, such that we do not have this insurance protection, is it of a significant importance to the community, to the city council, that you are willing to absorb this level of risk? If we had insurance coverage that was available beyond the one million dollars, obviously the risk goes down. If we had been able to discover an insurance company that was willing to underwrite a five million dollar policy, I frankly think that that would be pretty solid protection, even though the insurance, the experts recommended ten million. But I do know that one million dollars does not go very far in the current arena.
Okay, in the case of that program I was talking about, they are part of the state of California, so if they give us a letter specifically outlining that the City of Galt is not responsible for the actions of that, then we would be okay.
Any, if the state of California was willing to enter into an agreement with the city, that says that they are willing to indemnify the city for any claims that arise out of the use of the range by a particular program, then notwithstanding the fact that we do not have any, would not have any insurance protection, I would feel relatively comfortable with that, you know, that arrangement.
Now going back to the Boy Scouts, they have a one million dollar standing policy, and based on what you're telling me, that's not enough, but they're doing this in conjunction with the National Rifle Association, which has a considerably higher amount of money, if I understand correctly.
Two policies here that are one million dollars each, that have plus the Boy Scout policy, the number of rights.
So that'd be three million dollars. So it's still not enough in the eyes of litigation.
Well, that, I mean, that's for the council to decide. What I, what I'm reporting to you is that our, the experts that we retain to protect, protect us, to give us liability advice, have recommended, first of all, that the use not be allowed, secondly, that if you were to allow it, that you, that you require ten million dollars of coverage.
Outside the coverage issue, I think we have some other operational considerations for non-law enforcement groups that we probably need to discuss, that may be better discussed in a subcommittee forum, so we have an understanding of who from the city's on-site and we have other than a traditional law enforcement agency with a range master at that location. Because currently what we have is, with CDCR and others, they have a post-approved shooting protocol that they follow, and comes along with the liability that the city attorney's talked about, so we can waive the requirement for us to be on-site. However, if we're talking about other third-party folks, is where I started to raise a question when I was getting, not these two, but other unusual requests for use of the range, I think that without anybody on-site, no safety officer on-site representing the City of Galt and some other operational issues, we need to solve some of those pieces in conjunction with this liability piece. Because I think it's a bigger, it's a bigger piece, and I'm sorry to come up here and surprise folks with that, but I was unaware that this dialogue was going to take place in this forum this way tonight, because I was under the impression that we're operating in a different fashion with exclusions.
Would the council be willing to create an ad hoc committee to handle it?
Well, if there's information that's missing, we'd be able to do that.
Well, I think, I think the ad hoc committee is only relevant if the council's willing to waive the insurance requirements, because that's irrelevant if the insurance issue isn't addressed.
Steve, I just had a question. So even though outside agencies might be able to provide three million dollars of insurance coverage, my understanding is the city would still be the one that would be primarily liable because it's our facility. I mean, unless we were held not liable at all, and, you know, and parents, I'm sure, in the way of Boy Scouts and family members, you know, eight other groups, they're not willing to waive away their liability if something were to happen out there, and so the city still becomes the primary one liable, even if they haven't provided insurance coverage, correct? I mean, that's kind of how I see it as the owners of the property, is the ones responsible for the running of the property, we would still be primarily responsible. Even though they have provided some liability for themselves, it doesn't provide liability for us.
Yeah, if our insurance company recommends ten million and merely providing three million, then we're out of the others.
And our insurance company is saying we're not covering.
Yeah. You just put the city, the city at risk. And the unfortunate thing is, it just sounds like there's been activity at the, at the Wish Heart Shooting Plant and Shooting Range over the years that nobody knew we weren't covered. I mean, I have no idea how long this goes back, but I know that there have been different groups going out there for pretty much as long as I can remember.
The way it would work if we have other agencies providing insurance regardless of the amount, is their insurance would be tapped first. So in this case, we don't have any insurance, so if there was a claim at the happy range, then the cost of defense would be paid for out of that policy, if there was any damage award, it would be paid out of the policy, and then beyond that policy, then the city would have potential exposure. So that's, you know, and obviously if the amount goes up, then the chance of an award that exceeds that amount goes down. And, you know, I understand that, I understand the historical... And, and I, you know, I understand that, I understand the historical, I understand that there's a history of, of, of safety at the range, and, and there has not fortunately been incidents. But I think that, you know, the thing that needs to be taken into account is if it does occur, what is the, what is the potential exposure? And oftentimes, we're willing to take some risks on if we know that we've got some protection. But the question is, in this scenario, is how much risk are you willing to take when the exposure is to the general fund? And, you know, from a, from a, from a city perspective, I, I kind of would analogize it to, uh, you know, a game of chess. And our approach is that we protect the general fund, just like the king is protected in a game of chess, that, you know, that is the, the holy grail. And that is why I am, I would be concerned about a decision that put any exposure, uh, any exposure risk to the general fund.
Which puts the whole city at risk.
I, I, uh, I would ask maybe for staff to do, uh, maybe a little more exhaustive research in the area, for the city to purchase additional liability, to see if it does exist and what that cost is, I mean, even if it does exist. In addition to, uh, maybe having staff evaluate the three one million dollar policies, uh, that have been, you know, apparently in existence, to see if they even work, um, um, in the manner that the city attorney believes, uh, is necessary. And I, I would at least be willing to, to exhaust that. But absent, uh, I think the city finding, um, backup liability or some coverage, uh, I, I would be very hard pressed to, to allow such activity. And I know that's, uh, not what you want to hear, but the reality is, it's, uh, it just puts the city at, at, at a great, great risk.
So is that a motion to send it back to staff or?
I would form it in, as a motion of someone like the second.
Counselor.
You have a question, sir?
Yes, a quick comment. I think there was some interest early on about maybe the city going back to our, um, insurance pool and asking some questions about, one, why do they have these exclusions in there for private use of the ranges and, and whether or not they're, you know, depending on the answer, whether there'd be any consideration to reexamining that policy? Because if we get insurance, if we get the coverage through our, our, uh, pool, then it's an easy decision. Um, so that could be another avenue. That's kind of reexamine.
Yeah. I would think that maybe we would, yeah.
That's going to take longer because there, I mean, it's a whole organization.
The whole body.
Yeah.
You know, I, I would, at least, uh, maybe ask the executive director.
Why?
Yeah. Maybe if there's some history there, or, um, what is industry standards in other jurisdictions and, you know?
And I guess I, if we ask the insurance carrier also if we have an employee on site, one of our law enforcement officers on site to ensure the supervision of the range, I mean, that's one of my concerns, is that as much as I know that these gentlemen are well-qualified, if we reset, what happens if in that five years from now, the person's not as qualified? And so there, it kind of, when we have private groups out using the range, which is inherently a dangerous activity, um, and we don't have the control of the activities that's going on, I have some concern.
I would just say that I think we would all feel better if we knew, we have a little more justification. After, uh, going to this program for several years and all of a sudden it's like a door is slammed, that makes it difficult, and that's why I think, uh, we do need to look and see if there's any other ways. I also feel, uh, agree with, uh, Councilman Campion that we, we have to, um, protect our cities, and that's what we're here for, but, um, I would like to feel that we have looked at every way possible to see if there's some way that we could continue these programs, because I think it's, yes, it's inherently a dangerous, uh, situation, but on the other hand, I think the benefit that, um, these young people get for learning how to, um, operate a gun safely and have respect for it, I think that's an important contribution to that community as well.
True.
So I would like to see us look as much as we can and find out if there is a way.
Turn over as many rocks as possible.
Yeah.
Exhaust all possibilities.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion by Councilmember Campion and Vice Mayor Payne? And if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. So it'll be a five oh.
Thank you.
In favor, thank you, sir.
Thank you, please.
Okay, City Manager's Office, Department of Interim Police Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present this item to you this evening. As you all know, Chief Bowen here is planning on retiring coming, uh, coming up, April fifteenth, and so we've been planning on, um, figuring out the best, the best way to move forward to, um, not necessarily fill his shoes, but, uh, find a replacement for the position of police chief. And, and speaking with the city council, and, and the recommendation is that we, that we appoint, uh, an interim chief for a period of time, approximately six months, while we start the process of recruiting for a permanent replacement. And I think there's several different advantages of doing, doing, uh, an interim chief, uh, from the outside. And, uh, you know, we've done this in several different instances in the past with, uh, other positions, our Public Works Director, um, Parks and Recreation, we've brought in individuals from the outside, and they've brought some different perspectives, different leadership, different experiences that have benefited the organization. And, uh, and, and so I'm, we're looking to do the same thing in our police department, bring in somebody from the outside that can, can impart some, uh, some, some different approaches and leadership, um, styles and skills, and take a look at the organization, maybe help prepare it for maybe the next, uh, the, the change in leadership coming down the road. And so when we do that, we look at, you know, individuals that are well-respected in the region, throughout the state, that can, uh, be, be admired by the officers as well as the community. And so we, we looked around and found an individual that we feel very, very happy with, interviewed with the city council a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Dan Drummond is here in the audience, and we'll, we'll put him on the spot and ask him to come up in a few minutes after I'm done with my little presentation. But let me give you a little bit of background about, uh, Chief Drummond. He, uh, retired, uh, about a year and a half ago, about two thousand thirteen, uh, as police chief for the city of West Sacramento. He was there, I think, almost nine years. Uh, prior to that, he worked for the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department for twenty-seven years, starting as a deputy sheriff, moving his way up to the, um, near the top of the organization as, as a chief deputy. While he was there, did a lot of different, uh, different areas of responsibility, um, served as the, the city of Citrus Heights first chief as a contract, um, with Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, um, responsible for, while he was there, for over twelve hundred deputies. So, uh, an individual that certainly has, uh, has earned a lot of respect and a good reputation within this, within this region, and, uh, happy that we were able to come to an agreement with him to, uh, to tentatively, tentatively serve as the city of Galt's interim police chief upon the retirement of, of Chief Bowen. There is, uh, another, um, ancillary benefit to the city in that, that, that there are some cost savings associated with the appointment of about thirty-eight thousand dollars, and that's because there's no payment for retirement, medical benefits and so forth. Uh, Chief Drummond is a retired lieutenant, retired from, from CalPERS as well as, as the county, and so, uh, he's limited on the number of hours that he's allowed to work for us, um, um, but because it's over, over two fiscal years, he can work full-time for us over that, that period of time and be in full compliance with CalPERS rules. And, uh, so the recommendation this evening is that the council adopt a resolution approving the employment agreement with Dan Drummond, appointing him as interim police chief. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and want to ask him to come on up, and you can ask him any questions, or if he wants to make a statement to the city council as well. Happy to do that.
Would you like us to do the, uh, adoption first, or have him make his presentation?
However you would like to do it.
Let's do the adoption.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Don't be happy about.
I have a motion by Council, Councilmember Hewer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Powers. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Now you're on the spot.
So welcome.
It's a familiar spot for DIA, so, uh, right off the top, I'd like to congratulate Chief Bowen on a outstanding career. I just was talking to him before, in forty-two years, I mean, you know, I thought I had put in quite a bit of time at thirty-seven, but, uh, congratulations, Bill, and well-deserved retirement. Uh, I'd like to thank the city manager, mayor and the council, uh, for this opportunity. Really excited about, um, the opportunity. Uh, I've already talked a little bit with Brian, and, um, and looking forward to working with your staff to kind of prepare the department for, you know, moving on. I know when I, uh, left any organization, what I was hopeful for was that people would take what I had done with a group of people, because you don't do anything by yourself, and, and then build on that. So I, I hope that, you know, the next, you know, administration, uh, would go, you know, beyond and bigger and better improvements. And so if we can, we have about six months to kind of, you know, look at the department, get things ready, uh, for that next person to come in, when she or he then can, you know, hit the ground and, you know, to build on what Chief Bowen and his team have done already. So I really thank you for the opportunity and excited about it. Thank you.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now get to work.
Okay, City Development Department, the annual twenty thirty Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Support for twenty fourteen. Mr. Stewart.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This is a brief summary of the city's annual general plan and housing element progress report. Each year, cities are required to report to state, to the state's city progress towards meeting the goals of the general plan and the housing elements. Over the past year, uh, the city of Galt only processed one general plan amendment, and that was to adopt a renewed housing element in the past February. As a result of the economic downturn and development slowly picking up, in conjunction with, uh, the new housing element, uh, there's little to report on with regards to meeting housing element policies and goals at this time. Uh, however, as development continues to pick up, we'll have more to report on. Uh, a reminder, the progress report demonstrates the city's efforts to ensure compliance with the general plan, and that's through projects such as our CIP program, et cetera. We do have a new feature this year of our annual, uh, report, and this will be a feature from here on out, and that is to report on the successor agency's annual report for the low and moderate income housing fund. In other words, this is to demonstrate the city's compliance with new Senate Bill three forty-one. What this, uh, report does, as it's provided in the appendix D for the, uh, the annual report here, is it provides a listing of the housing successor agencies' assets, expenditures, transfers, et cetera. It should be noted that the successor agency for the city of Galt does not own any real property acquired with low or moderate income funds. We don't have any surplus at this point, nor any transfers made to the fund. Um, all of that information, like I said, is in the, uh, it's in the appendix D to your report, and in compliance with, uh, Senate Bill three forty-one, we will be posting this on the city's website here shortly. The planning commission, uh, considered this item on February twelfth, twenty fifteen, and unanimously recommended approval of the report to the city council. So therefore, in compliance with state laws, staff recommends following, um, several parts of action to you this evening. That is to review the annual general plan and housing element progress report, provide an opportunity for public comments, consider the planning commission's recommendation to you, direct staff to make any needed modifications to the report, and by motion, accept the report and direct staff submitted to the office, the governor's office of planning and research, and the department of housing and community development. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Questions from council? Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Campion, second with Vice Mayor, uh, Payne? I'll get there. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Can I just say one thing to you, Tony, on this first page here? We've got the planning commission, it's all screwed up here.
Yeah. I apologize for that.
No, I just wanted to.
What happened was the, um, the entire Word document got lost. I have no idea what happened to it. We had to take the PDF, convert it, and unfortunately, the conversion looks like that. I'm in the process of, uh, making it look, um, proper again, so we can send it off.
Well, that's always a funny job, huh? To read the format. The city council wants all kinds of. Oh, yes, same way. Yeah, it's quite nice. Mine looks okay.
Okay.
Okay. That's all right. Thank you.
Okay, Development Code Update, zoning map amendment and landscape design guidelines. Mr. Stewart, you again.
Okay. Uh, just very quickly, uh, based on a request by, uh, the city council made at the workshop last week, um, the city council had recommended additional, uh, time to, to continue reviewing the documents presented, and also, uh, requested that staff meet with Chamber Commerce, uh, particularly with regard to, uh, the new science standards in local food vending. Uh, staff has met with the Chamber Board, we met with them last Wednesday, and I'll be meeting with the Chamber as a whole, uh, this coming Thursday at their monthly luncheon to, to again, present these, uh, comments. And then what I'll do is I'll bring back everything, uh, to you, so, uh, per your request, and, and, uh, to, uh, gather those comments from the Chamber, if any. Uh, staff is recommending that the, uh, this item be continued to the next, uh, council meeting, which would be able to.
Okay. Any other public comments? Mike?
Mike Edgar, General Park company. Uh, looking at it still here about the landscape design, I think we better be thinking about, you've been reading the paper about water. And, uh, as you know, um, I think it's time that maybe we're going to have to start looking at artificial turf, because if there's any indication of what's happened this year, and if we get another one next year, we're not going to have any water. Now, I understand we run out of wells and that kind of thing, but at some point, we're going to have to look at that very perspective and what we're going to do. And I think we ought to look at the landscape design on what we're doing with our houses and try to, maybe we go to more drip system than we do with spray system on the plants and so on and so forth. And maybe, maybe change it where the people could go to artificial turf if they wanted to.
That was one of the comments that I believe Councilman Hewer brought up, to increase the percentage, because I believe it was limited to twenty-five percent of turf in your front yard.
Right.
That to where you could go, well, I think it was full coverage if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think the planning commission made that recommendation.
Okay, yeah. And so that, you know, you probably have some shrubs and bushes, but where mainly where you have your lawn now, lawns now, you could go to artificial turf if that's what you wanted.
Well, the other thing is that, uh, in our situation, uh, as you know, we're coming out with a new subdivision along East Stockton Boulevard, and, uh, we would like to be able to look at that about, uh, drip system and artificial turf also, and sort of, uh, after the word about spray and so on and so forth, if that's possible.
Very good idea. Yeah, one of my comments, one of my concerns was, if you go to Southern California and many of the desert communities, which, unless we start getting water, we're all going to be in, um, but the southwest designs and, and having, um, landscapes that have very little, um, that are much more of a hardscape kind of thing, can be really beautiful, and so we're going to move.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, communications, none?
Can I have a motion for continuance, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second with Vice Mayor Payne. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. I, uh, almost slipped that one past us. Not with it. Okay, we're on the comments by staff. Nothing? Tony, anything else? Steve?
Well, in addition to Harvey Park, we've, uh, commenced work in the last couple of days on the, um, Meadowview area water service ladder replacement project, and the contractor's moving rapidly. They've, uh, done a lot of exploratory digging on all the customers along Tudor Way, and that'll be expanded to the other five streets that we'll be replacing. So if you get any calls, feel free to refer to us, uh, but so far, the maximum water outage has only been thirty minutes instead of the four hours that we conditioned folks to expect. Now, we're on the short side, they've been able to find things without having to shut the water mains down when we moved to the other side of the street. With a longer dig, we may have to, uh, go back to our original plan, which is to shut things down for four hours at a time while we locate, uh, those actual service connection points. But so far, so good, and we'll take happy thoughts.
Awesome. Chief Bowen?
Yes, going along with, uh, public trust.
Yes, going along with public trust through professional service, I received another letter that was given to me last Friday. Dear Chief Bowen, I just wanted to commend your department for the great impression your officer made on our daughter's family. I've been a Galt resident for over 20 years. My daughter and her family have decided to leave Stockton and move to Galt. Their daughters are quickly reaching the age where deciding to put them in private or public school is becoming a concern, and they decided that a higher mortgage payment in Galt was easier decision than a private school in Stockton. While looking at a home on Vineyard Court they had decided to purchase, there was a knock on the door. We could see it was a Galt police officer. We figured someone had called about the three cars being at the vacant house for some time during the evening hours. What we found out was the neighbor had just called. The realtor's car was in their driveway approximately six inches. The response time was about 10 minutes. My daughter was shocked, not because of the reason that the officer had responded so quickly, but they had recently hit the panic alarm in their home in Stockton. That alarm company was not able to reach my daughter nor her husband. Stockton Police Department's response was eight hours. While the panic button had been hit accidentally, my daughter said that she could have easily been in serious trouble. So thank you, Galt Police Department, for an outstanding first impression for my daughter and her family. While we know this kind of response each time for such a minor infection won't always be the case, I know that professionalism in the department will always be. Thank you, sir.
Wow, very nice.
Kudos to you. Mr. Bearman?
Did you mention the quiet dump? Was it maybe not? All this stuff going on, we got Harvey Park and the quiet dump, sorry, it's been a problem going on.
All right.
Mr. Rudolph? Okay, what's got done on this end? Councilmembers, Mr. Campion?
Um, the only thing I, I was invited to Meals on Wheels last week and attended their luncheon over at Chaboya and was impressed with the operation that they have engulfed. It blew me away, the number of meals that they supply and the number of people, the number of volunteers they have to, to service those people that are homebound. It was a real eye-opener.
Pretty awesome.
What point of interest is that for the food concern for the senior luncheon, Meals on Wheels?
It is.
Yes.
Maylin?
Well, I actually don't have anything.
Okay. All right.
I just like, I could say that I really noticed, I think, the change in the staffing level for our police officers. It seems to be that I'm seeing many more patrol cars out in the city. I really noticed it, and it was like, wow. I really noticed that there, that there seems to be more coverage and they're out there, and I was really glad to see that. So I'm really pleased that that has worked out.
Awesome. Vice Mayor?
Want to share with you that I had attended Galt High School's musical guys and dolls, and it was awesome hearing these high school students sing, especially the guys, and doing a really good job. Plus, it was funny as it could be. Encouraged the community to get out more and see the talent we have at our high schools. That's it.
I noticed something missing here.
What?
Our city clerk forgot to put in her updated information.
It's in there.
Did you?
Yeah.
You just didn't notice it? Okay. No, I'm fine. Just teasing. On a serious note, something I omitted at the beginning of the meeting, I wanted to take, to correct. Although we, we are a city of volunteers, the city doesn't move without volunteers in the public sector. I wanted to note three members of the public sector who've recently passed away and had a great deal to do as far as helping out the city. That being Gail Bruce with CAPS, Tracy Crawford, who was an instructor with the Best Academy.
Galt High School?
Galt High School. And Doll Augustine, who was a member of the friends in the library. I just want to let the family and the members of family, let, let them know that we, our hearts, prayers are with them. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.